All right.
Okay.
Hey Eric.
Hey Gary. How are you?
Good. We're all coming on.
Yeah. Were you, when you guys like started to log in and then it kicked you to a screen that says waiting for the host to start or something like that, is that correct?
Yep, that's what we saw.
Yeah.
Yeah. And now I see a phone.
Who is 3051909?
Hello. My name is John August. We're number one on application tonight representing Canadaque Crossings 2536 Rochester Road.
Okay.
Matt Tomlinson is our engineer just came on as well.
Okay.
Hello folks.
Hello everyone.
Is everybody seeing my screen right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, I'm seeing you. Yes, John August, yes.
Here we go. Chuck, Karen, Bob Ryan, Gary, Amanda, John, we're here. Chris is not joining us tonight. But if we need him, we can give him a call.
Okay. Were you able to get a flag Eric?
Oops, sorry.
No, do we have a flag or should we forego the pledge?
Got one right there.
Whoa.
There it is.
Let me count the stars, make sure they're all there.
Yeah, that's it.
That's it. Nice job.
Make sure not to grab one from like the 1950s before Alaska was.
At least has more than 13 stars. That's nice, thanks, thanks for getting that. I wasn't sure how we were gonna do that. I'm gonna skip the emergency evacuation procedure everyone. I assume you know how to get out of your own house. I hope you're near a door. Any change in the agenda Eric or is it as published?
As published.
Okay. Time wise, who we missing?
I don't think anybody.
Oh.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Loud and clear.
You can hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm running into it. Okay, this is Ryan talking. I'm trying to get, I have a waiting clock that's happening in the middle of my screen right now and I don't know if it's trying to join something it seems, but I can't move it out of the way. I might disconnect and call right back, is that all right?
That's fine. Is anybody else running into the same issue?
No, I'm good.
I'm clear.
All good.
Shucks.
Well.
Can't even turn it off. It's just saying waiting, bizarre.
Hey, there you are Ryan.
You can see me Chuck?
Yeah.
You know what, I'll just deal with it. I'm just gonna deal with it.
Can you hear, is your audio okay Ryan?
Yep, I can hear everything and I also have a computer in front of me to pull up the agenda and stuff and follow along with this.
Okay. All right, well let's, let's get started. Why don't we do the pledge, if you want to put that flag up. And I will say I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
To America.
To the Republic.
One nation. Justice for all.
Justice for all.
All right, well done.
Thanks Chuck.
Uh. Eric, do you want to just refresh the procedure?
Yep.
What we're gonna do tonight and in future meetings?
Sure. So, all the meetings are gonna begin at six. What happened tonight will likely happen moving forward, you can log in and try to join the meeting and it'll kick you into the waiting room until I've started the meeting. Per the executive order of the governor, all meetings are gonna be recorded and then later transcribed. Everybody can attend this meeting either through the Zoom app with the meeting ID or through calling in, the meeting ID is published on the town's website, the public hearing notices if appropriate and on the agenda. As we move forward, everyone will be muted except for the chair, the board and a staff. The chair will essentially run the meeting from that point similar to otherwise. We'll invite the first applicant, applicant up. They'll be unmuted at that time and then we can go through their presentation. After the board goes back and forth with the applicant, then we'll open it up to the public. If they have the Zoom app, we'll do that first and they can use the raise their hand feature to signify that they have something that they'd like to share or a question. After the Zoom app is done, we'll open up any phone or the phone call ins because they don't have that feature and try to do it as orderly as possible, one by one. I will control the screen, so if you guys have anything that you want me to pull up, let me know. Some unlimited one I can pull up, so bear with me. But that's it and from there you can turn it over to Chuck.
Okay, any questions on how we're gonna proceed? All right, let's do a quick roll call for the benefit of our, of our guest. Karen?
Yeah, I'm known as Dell4800 but I'm here.
Okay, okay Dell. Ryan?
I'm here.
Gary?
Yep, here.
Bob?
Here.
Amanda?
Here.
And we're also joined by Lance Brayban, our engineer, and John Rovatella, our recording secretary.
Yep, I'm here.
Eric Cooper is our sergeant at arms. If anybody gets out of hand, Eric, you just mute them or cut them off? All righty. There were no legal notices to be published for this meeting, so we'll proceed. I will say that we are setting history tonight. This is the first fully recorded or what do I want to call it?
Telephonic or?
Telephonic meeting of the planning board, so you're all part of history and you can tell your grandchildren at some point or your great grandchildren hopefully that you were all part of it. So appreciate your cooperating with us and I will call on the privileged floor. If anybody's out there either on phones that would like to chime in, not hearing anything, we'll move on to our first application. It's Marathon representing Canadaque Crossings, owner of property at 2536 State Route 332. They're seeking site plan approval for the removal of trees, overgrown scrub brush with a disturbance of over 1,000 square feet. I think John August is on the line along with his engineer.
I am.
You are up John, you want to tell us a little bit about what happened?
Yes, I will. Thank you very much. We're in front of four different municipalities for zoning. You're the first one that got this done online and we appreciate keeping the process going. I'm the owner of 2536 Rochester Road, Route 332. We have with us tonight Matt Tomlinson, engineer for Marathon Engineering in Rochester, New York who completed the plans and the application. We've owned the, I've owned the Monroe muffler next door for a little over 50 years and this parcel for just over 20. We were approved for development a little over 10 years ago for retail development which got sidetracked when we entered a lawsuit that was done between some KFC franchisees. Over territorial rights, KFC pulled out and we've been unable to lease it since. Very little leasing calls. Our leasing department asked if we could remove the scrub trees. We hired Schreiber landscaping to do that work at our request. They went to the town to check and see if a permit was required. They were told not and they were all set to go and they started the job and then they were shut down about a day later. Our person, Dan Schreiber, the son of the owner, evidently when he talked to the zoning code enforcer, they said we weren't clear that the stumps were coming out too and those required a permit. I want to be clear though, we came to the town and asked at my request, make sure before we started, we shut the process, the property project down immediately. Didn't take any more trees down. This property is, they had a lot of uncontrolled fill in it prior to us owning it. So the stumps just pulled right out the roof. They weren't very deep, the trees weren't that old, but the soil was so soft that just moving the bulldozers and the loaders around churned the soil up pretty badly. So we want to start by apologizing. It was not our intent to start this work without permission, but here's where we are. We came to the workshop about a month ago with our application. We've made some plans, some changes that they had asked and I'm gonna turn it over to Matt, but we're here tonight of course asked to finish the job which is going to consist of just leveling the existing dirt and seeding it. We're not, got a lot of topsoil on there, just needs to be spread around. We're not importing any more soil on site. We probably could finish this job up in about a week. With that, I just, that's how we got here and I apologize and appreciate the patience of the board with us. Let me turn over to Matt Tomlinson and see if there are any details you think that should be discussed, Matt.
No, I think that's it. What we really want to do is just get in there, get its basically just needs to be raked, seeded and mulched so that we can establish some grass out there and stabilize all the soil. I did see comments, brief comments came in from Lance which I responded to by email late this afternoon. I don't see any issues there with providing what he's asked for and if and when, as soon as we get approval and can get the contractor back out there, we'll get this thing stabilized.
Okay.
Questions we could answer for you.
I open it to the board. Any questions from the board members?
Ryan has one.
I see your hand up Ryan.
Yeah, so I'm just for clarification, the letter from Lance that he just referred to a sentence ago, is that the, is that the letter dated March 31st, 2020?
Yes, this is Lance. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Reference, there was a question whether any steep slopes on the property. Is there anything that qualifies as far as our definition of a steep slope? Tough to tell from the contours.
Well, yeah, I was concerned with, I wasn't, you know, based on their limits of disturbance area as defined in the plans, I don't think they're in any area that would qualify as a three on one. But I just wanted to put it as a reference just in case there are going to be more disturbances outside of what was shown.
Okay, so there really is nothing of any substance. Okay. So it's about a 1.6 acre lot of which about 0.9 acres were disturbed. I did see numerous times it stated that no topsoil would be brought into the site, that it would destabilize using the soil that's natural to the site. And then there's a, on the plan, a sequence of construction including the restoration process. Anybody have any questions on that? Do they feel it's adequate?
No questions.
Okay.
This is, this is Gary. I've got, got one question, since they are reseeding, do we need phosphorus notes on the site plans and Lance, was that in your, I don't know if that was in your letter or not?
Yeah, that's, that was in MRB's letter dated the 31st to make sure that they had the town's phosphorus notes to be added.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it was, this application was distributed to to the county soil district. They had somewhat of a concern. They want to make sure that the cemetery surrogacy was preserved and I think that's being shown adequately on the plan. Eric, we sent the, we sent it to the county planning board, but we got no response from them, so I assume we've met our obligation there.
Yep.
Okay. Let's see, fertilizer notes. Just a small thing, in, in the erosion notes on the plan, the last the last numbered item was sequencing and it, it, just to the lower left of that, it's construction sequence and you're more or less saying the same thing, so it's sort of a duplication Matt of the same thing, so I guess you don't need both both of those notes on there.
Yeah, we'll clarify that on the final revised plan that we send back in to you guys.
Okay. You don't have to make that as part of the, the resolution Lance, so we're okay. Well, okay, it's another one of these after the fact jobs, but I think John has explained how it happened, so I guess we move on.
I have one question.
Sure.
Eric, this is Ryan Stachak. Eric, I have a question, was there any penalty imposed to the applicant?
No, just stop work order. Nope, they made the application to remedy, so there was no need to take it to court or anything like that.
I think that's great John, if you could just make that a note for the, for the record, that the town did not impose any financial burden?
Appreciate it, thank you.
You bet.
Well, I know that you guys came in to talk to us about it, it was just a miscommunication.
Is the property on the market again John or are you just, I know the reason. Go ahead.
Prefer much, much to lease it. We really don't want to sell it. We've had a plan which now is expired, but we think is still a good development plan that we'd like to come back in if we can get some interest. We just need a lead tenant.
It's, it's not really subject to this application, but I know that the NIDOT had concerns about access. You have rights of access into the parking lot and that traffic signal that exists there for rays and town walls?
No, we do not, but we have access right into the Monroe before the medium where there's a clear access both directions. We own enough property right up to the Monroe muffler that gives us unfettered really access with the medium, just, just to the south side of the medium end.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I'm the old sage, it was around when KFC was trying to build this thing, nobody else was around then. Even Eric, Lance was, that's right.
I was, yeah, I was here.
Yeah, you're getting old too Lance. But anyway, it was, it was a challenge as far as the access. So again, not an issue for tonight. I'm ready to move on if everybody else is. I'll entertain a motion under seeker. This is an unlisted action, so if somebody would be so good to make that, I'd appreciate it.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is everybody comfortable with the seeker application in terms part one, part two, part three?
Yes.
If so, I'll, I'll, did I get a second? I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Yeah, I knew that was coming up.
Bob.
Thank you.
Okay, Karen made a motion, Bob seconded it, through the seeker, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move on to the single stage site plan. Someone would be so good to make that motion.
All right, this is Gary. I will make a motion to approve a single stage site plan CPN 0005 for Marathon Engineering, Representative Canadaque Crossings LLC subject to the five conditions that are stated on the resolution.
Okay, do I have a second?
I will second that. This is Ryan.
Can I make a, can I make a comment on this resolution real quickly?
You have control, you have control of the mutes, go ahead.
We were requiring a surety estimate, but I'm just curious if that's necessary here, I guess, considering it's already been disturbed and it's just a matter of cleaning it up. Do we want to delay it potentially any further or just, I'm gonna go out there and clean it, just, just a thought.
Eric, before anybody, if I could, for the record, are they able to get out there and stabilize it with a certain, with the criteria, the way it is right now?
You mean like with the executive order and everything?
Right.
If there's one person on site, sure, but if there's more than that, which is probably likely, no, we couldn't issue a permit right now.
So let's say if there is only going to be one person, I guess then the question goes back to the applicant, how soon would they be out there stabilizing the site?
Um, I will tell you, I didn't, I did not contemplate the non-essential services that this would qualify for. Company were full on, so I hadn't given that thought. Aside from that, my guess, we thought that we would have this done in about three days, max. That was with a team of men. I'd have to assume, it may be prudent to wait, otherwise I could check with a landscaper and see if he could get this done within a week and a half or so utilizing only one personnel on site. I don't know the answer to that, I'm sorry.
We've been, oh, sorry, this is Matt Tomlinson, but the, we've been taking a look at the weather when we've been doing some SWIP inspections lately and the next two weeks are not looking great for putting grass seed down anyways.
Okay.
So if we're getting closer to the end of the month, close to May 1st, when we're hoping that some of these are lifted, that may go quickly, but it's tough for us to give you a hard number right now.
And I'll have to check with Chris Jensen too, considering this is an open violation and I'm not sure if, you know, it's essential necessarily to the preservation of like the stormwater facilities to get it stabilized, whether they'll be exempt from that rule, but I can check with him anyways.
This is Ryan. Can we just make a, can we just leave that up to the town engineer? And keep moving this thing along?
I would say that, I would say that I personally like the idea of keeping it in as a condition, but maybe it's condition dependent upon the timetable for how soon the applicant can get out there. I mean, if this is a scenario where we're looking at a month before anybody's out there, I think it makes sense to have that, that protection.
So let's leave it in.
I agree. Okay, so the.
Sorry, this is Matt, but if you do leave it in, could you just amend the condition to say it's deemed necessary by the town engineer or by Chris Jensen, however you want to say it?
Yeah, yeah, I agree, Matt. I would say that we, we were to, in a way that it's per the town's request. That we, we put it in there, but per the town development officer, code enforcement officers' request.
I accept that change.
Okay, the maker of the motion accepts the revision.
No, that wasn't me, I'm sorry, this is Ryan. I think Gary made the motion.
Yeah, I made the motion and I'll accept that change.
Okay, so the motion's been revised and, and the seconder has approved it, so let's move on and take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? You guys have it. Okay, thanks fellows.
Thank you. One question of the town, if I may, if we're able to secure an exemption to work under the, under the current rates, is that okay with the town if we provide proof that we've been granted an exemption to begin this work immediately or as soon as possible?
We'll just have to work through Chris Jensen. He's been.
Very good. Will do. Thank you, thank you for all your time tonight and getting this started. The very, we're honored to be the very first online application approved by your town, so thank you very much.
You'll go down in the annals of town of Canadaque history. All right, thank you very much John.
Thank you both, thank you so much.
Good night.
Thank you guys.
All right, next item on the agenda as we follow along would be the minutes from way back on March 10th. They were revised by Gary I believe and myself, so do I hear a motion to accept them as revised?
I'll make a motion to accept them as revised.
Sounds like Bob.
Yeah, Bob.
Have a second?
I'll second Gary.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none? Okay. Referrals from town board, there are none, right Eric? For now, recommendation?
Just touching on that though, and later on in this month, we'll be doing the two local laws which have been sent to you guys previously, but just to avoid getting them on on earlier, so we have more time to look at it. So lighting one and the pools and the RLD, I believe was the other one.
Okay. Did you send out a draft on the parking?
Only to the ordinance committee.
Okay. So it's laying in pools, okay, very good. Nothing being asked for by the ZBA. All right, move down to letter credits. The Wegman family over in Chester Glen would like to have a release. Lance, why don't you bring us up to speed as to for what and how much?
Sure, this is a partial letter credit release in the amount of $25,000. There's still considerable not remaining within the letter credit to finish the job. There's no objections from the town staff on this. And this would be release number three.
Okay. And it's in the amount of, I'm sorry. Okay. By the way, a motion to allow for the release.
Motion.
Is that?
Aaron.
It's Dell.
All right, Dell makes a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second Gary.
All right, very good, thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Is Bob Minzer joining us at all Eric? Or is he, want to let us sort of fly with this?
We invited.
I don't know if you can hear him, but I am on the phone.
Oh, there we are.
Oh, okay, hey, there he is.
I called him in, sneak into the phone.
Okay, Bob, thanks for joining us. All right, so I guess we, we came up with Flightline Drive. That seems to be what you proposed. Eric, you've run it by the powers to be to make sure there's no conflicts?
Yep, county signed it. They just asked to resubmit the naming form.
Okay. Anybody have any discussions?
I think it's a great name.
And.
Thanks. Was that Ryan?
It was Ryan, yeah.
Bob, you're doing this because you guys are planning on doing what, like building out and now you need that road name, is that correct?
That's correct. You saw some of the, our airport layout plan we presented last year and we should be coming up the next couple of months with some more development and I think you'll, I think you'll be impressed with our, our presentation. So I look forward to coming to the planning board with that.
Okay.
This, this is Gary Humes. Has the, has the plans he presented us last year, so have they, have they started already?
They're, they're still in the planning stages. We haven't executed any construction yet, but we, you'll know first, because we, we have a developer with plans to build a hangar. He'll probably be up and we've got a terminal building that we've, we're in a design phases now, so we're hoping to break around this year yet, this summer, so, you know, of course, everything's been delayed and we'll see how that goes.
Okay, very good. So do I have a consensus that we all agree that Flightline Drive should be the name that should be assigned to this particular private drive?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'm sorry John, I didn't get a motion in a second. I just sort of figured it was consensus on this thing rather than a formal motion.
I don't think we can change the name of the road, can we? Don't we just?
I don't think it has a name.
Yeah.
It doesn't have a name right now and the planning board is the authority in charge of doing it for the town.
Oh, well, let's have a contest. Why, why go with Flight, you know?
Well, that's what-
In honor of our virtual meeting, call it Zoom. Zoom Drive. Hey, Bob Minzer, while I got you in the horn, did you see that email from John Arthur that was sent to Terry Finley? He had some concerns.
I, I received an email from John Arthur. Well, he sent it to the IDA. I did respond, and I haven't heard back from him, but it certainly invited him to come down and, you know, address his concerns in person, because I, I think he's, yeah, got a little bit of misinformation, but I think we'll be able to, as I said, when we come to the planning board, we'll have a good visual presentation, and I'm prepared to offer that to public via our website. So I think, I think that'll alleviate John's concerns, because he's, he is more concerned with some of our 20-year buildout, which is a requirement we have to put in our airport layout plan for the FAA, and isn't necessarily how it's going to happen, so, and we're, you know, I've got a more realistic vision and I think would have actually more of a positive impact on the neighborhood and really alleviate John's concerns.
Okay, well, it sounds like you're on top of it, so I just wanted to make sure.
You were aware.
Anything else for Bob? If not, Bob, go have dinner. And we appreciate, we appreciate your calling in.
Thanks, Bob.
I, I will. I may remain on the line for another application, but I'll be client.
Sure, sure. It's always good to have guests.
I don't have the agenda in front of me, but I think, I think it's, it's on the-
If you're talking about the Dikowski one, that one's on the agenda for the 14th.
Well, that's the 14th? Okay, then I'm going to have dinner.
Okay. We'll see you next week.
All right, I really appreciate everybody's help.
And we'll hear you next week.
We'll see you sometime on the Flightline Drive.
All right.
Have a good night.
Good night, Bob. Moving along, we, we have a request for a 90-day extension. Their second from Marathon Engineers representing S&amp;J Morrell, owners of property at St. James Parkway. You have the extension in front of you, or you can get it.
Yep.
The reasoning was, I guess, kind of just generic, still working on addressing the issues. Any particular issue?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I can add to it just a little bit. They are working on addressing the conditions of approval, one of which is the MRB conditions in our letter. I, I can tell you that we have issued a final comma letter as late as maybe two weeks ago, so they are looking to address them. They're very minimal at this time, but I'm under the impression they're working towards getting those addressed, getting plans into the town for signature.
Okay. So this is their second and hopefully last request for an extension, so I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
I move it.
Okay, Dell, thanks. Anybody else want to give a second?
I'll second it, it's Bob.
All right, thanks, Bob. All right, motion second to give Marathon, give Morrell his second 90-day extension on his, his approval. All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, we move on to Dave and Laura Daldeeta, owners of property at 4385 County Route 16, and they are requesting their first 90-day extension. Lance, is it same thing, they're just trying to meet the-
Yeah, I believe so. Eric may know more about this one than I, but I believe so.
Yeah. I don't, really don't have more information than that, unfortunately. I can't pull up any emails from them right now. But I believe that's the reason. They're just working forward to the conditions, but-
All right, well-
And for the record, they're, they're going to have, if the board moves forward tonight, the expiration date will be July 7, 2020. I think it's good to put it in the recording minutes as well.
Okay. So we have a request for a 90-day extension to July 7, 2020 for the Daldeeta property. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So move.
Okay, Ryan, thank you. And the second was from?
Bob.
Bob. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, we're down to property up the street here from me on Foster Road, and it's Larry Marquis representing, I'll let you read it from the agenda, owner of property at 5141 Foster Road, and they're requesting a one-year extension. Eric, do you want to give us a little bit of background on this?
90 days. Yeah, what, 90 day extension?
It's going to be a one-year extension. The town code, so this is what happened. It was approved originally last year in March. Plans were signed. The owner at the time, Timothy Moran, I think construction costs kind of jumped up pretty quickly on him there, and he said, okay, I'm not going to build it. He's told it to this new person, Steveda. She is looking to change the plan slightly, essentially going with a smaller house, similar location. But because it came along later in the process, they needed an extension. Town code requires one-year extensions of signed site plans. It's not as if it was a conditional approval. Plankwood has already granted the approval, so it'll be a one-year extension request. They don't think they're going to need that much before permits are granted. I think it will be, you know, as soon as this sort of ban on construction activities is lifted, but code requires a year.
Okay, and I, I looked at the revised plan, and one of our conditions was a concern over the drainage on the neighbor's property, and I think the revision that they did resolved any potential of that happening. So in fact, the plan is probably better than the original plan, so I would certainly recommend we move ahead with approving the extension. So that being said, any other questions on this application?
So no construction was, was done yet on that property? Was there any clearing done or foundation or site work done at all? Nothing?
No, no permits were issued in conjunction with it.
I drive by it every day, or used to, but no, nothing was done on the property. I think Jim Fletcher's requiring a longer, larger driveway culvert, which he's already let it be known to the builder, so, so that will happen also. So, any other questions?
I guess I'm a little confused. If I, if I heard it right, it's, it's a different owner. So we have a different owner who now wants to modify the plans. I guess since it's a different owner, why isn't, why don't we, why don't we just cancel the old one and have the new owner come in with a brand-new set? Is that basically what we're doing, or why are we giving an extension to something that's going to be changed?
Because you don't, regardless of what the project is, you never grant approvals based on the owner. It's based on the project before you. So change of ownership means nothing for planning and zoning boards.
Okay.
And so when we, when there are changes to a plan that's been signed, we essentially look at it to say, okay, is this substantially similar to what was there previously? If there's major changes, it'll go back to you guys, but there's always changes in between, you know, the conditional approval and the final approval when it's signed off from the planning board. So there is a bit of discretion there. In this instance, it's placed on site in essentially the same place. Again, it's a little smaller house, so there's less impact to the site. It addresses all the other conditions of the planning board and all the other conversations of it, so it was felt that it was okay to go forward.
Do we know when they are planning on coming in and bringing the new plans to us?
Say that again?
Do we know when they are planning to submit the revised plans to us?
We have a PDF copy of them.
It's imminent, so it's probably within the next 60 days or so.
Oh, yeah. I mean, they wanted to start construction a couple of weeks ago, before this whole thing got held up and whatnot.
Gary, when you say us, do you mean the board or the town?
They're bringing it back to us, the board, planning board, right?
I, I think Eric's saying that's not the case. Is that correct, Eric?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying. It's not necessary to go back to the board.
If they're, if they're substantial enough, they would be, but they're not.
Yes.
Okay. And who, and who made that, who makes that call? Just curious.
So in instances where we're all, like, I would send it to the people who'd be signing it, Chuck. Chris Jensen reviews it in this instance, and other times it would be Lance and Jim Fletcher and myself. So we look it over to make sure it still meets the conditions. Some, again, some of it's subjective and discretionary, but that's it.
Are you, are you feeling more comfortable, Gary?
Yeah, I, I guess.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I think the original application, the owner or the applicant was the owner of the lot, and the, the name was, was the equitable owner who had a conditional agreement of sale to buy it and build a house, then he backed out, and then this fellow came in, and now he's buying it and it's going to build it. So it was really a change of equitable owners, I think, that happened here.
Okay. I, I was, I'm just trying to remember it. Eric, you don't have ability to bring up that site plan, do you?
Not right now, no.
All right.
Why don't you send it to Gary, Eric? And anybody else on the board that would like to have a copy of it, just to check it, to make sure. There's an email from the engineer, Larry Marquis, and he sort of explained what they did as far as the changes and why they did it, and how he feels it improved the conditions off-site, relieved the concerns of the neighbors. So why don't you distribute that to everybody, Eric, just to make everybody informed? And it had a copy of the revised plan, as well as the original plan too, if I recall.
Yeah, I'm going to send both of them out.
Okay, very good. So is everybody ready to move ahead, at least with granting the extension for a year?
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I did update the resolution as requested. The new resolution does identify it as a one-year extension, and then the first paragraph where it references a one 90-day extension that was removed, and it now references a one-year extension. I just wanted that for the record.
Okay, the resolution we're looking at on the screen says first 90-day extension resolution.
Right, I had updated it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I, I know you said you changed it. I thought maybe it got changed before, before it got put on the screen.
It changed a couple of times lower on one-year extension here and the one-year extension down here.
Right, but I have since updated the title and the first whereas paragraph.
Okay.
Good, okay.
Very good. All right, Gary, I'll let you make the motion to extend it if you want to.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion to, for a one-year extension for, I can't read the, CPN 009-19.
Okay, very good.
I second it.
Bob seconded. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Somebody say aye.
Did I hear it, or an aye?
Ryan.
Oh, Ryan?
No, whoa, 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 whoa. I did not oppose it.
Yeah.
You were just late?
I, I voted aye.
Aye.
Guys, you get, you got to appreciate, it takes a little longer. There's a time delay to get to Ketchum Road.
There really is. The screen is still thinking right now. DSL is not really-
Are you going to dial up? Are you going to dial up, Brian?
Yeah.
We have spectrum now.
Yeah, my bank account isn't too, too excited about the spectrum.
It's, it's not bad. I'm not mad about it.
The town will pay for it.
Highly suggests.
The town will pay for it, Ryan, so you can be connected to the meetings.
Sweet. Thanks for having me. I'd like to make a motion to approve that, man.
Yeah, make a motion and the town pay our spectrum bills.
Yeah.
All righty, I think we've nearly come to the end of the agenda. Are there any available training sessions online that we can be doing? I know most of the in-person training sessions were canceled. The, the one up in Saranac or Sagamore was canceled, the one at, at the basin was canceled. So anything happening, John or Eric, regarding online training?
There is a sexual harassment online training, because I did it last year.
Yeah.
And that, that certainly worked just great. I didn't have any trouble this year with anything like that.
I can send out probably a link to that one. You could certainly do it, and the state will require it by August. Obviously, the town was going to hold its own for the board in later this month, but that got canceled. So potentially you could do that one online, and then there's, of course, the Department of State classes, which are all available online. They also don't change much, so if you've taken them in the past, it'll be more of a refresher course. But I don't, haven't seen announced online training so much yet. But I'll keep an eye out for it, and there's definitely some different websites, like different planning websites online that might have some, so I'll look for some online if you guys are interested.
Okay, yeah. I mean, most of us have the time. Let's see, okay, so we're going to meet again next Tuesday. Does anybody have any comments, concerns, questions as to how we could have ran this meeting any better, any efficiencies that we could do? I think for the most part, you know, the, the video, the audio worked out pretty well.
Yeah, anything we could do better, guys?
I thought we talked about roll calls.
We did. We did it.
We did it.
I did it at the beginning.
I was-
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, Dell, Dell 4800 chimed in that she was not Karen.
I thought that was for each of the, I thought that was for each of the agenda items, but I'm okay. I just-
Oh, you want-
Oh, you want to, you want a verbal aye 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 for each individual in each motion?
No, I don't, I don't want that. I just thought we talked about that.
Okay.
I'm okay with it. I'm fine.
It works fine today. If there is any, any application where somebody's going to abstain or somebody's going to vote no, I think that's probably appropriate. Otherwise, if you just do a voice vote and everybody falls on one side, there's no point.
Right, especially where in the beginning of the meeting, you've already announced that all five members are here.
Okay.
And if I do hear a no, I will call for a roll call then for, on a motion to find out who the, who was opposed. So let it be sort of proceeding that way. All right, so next week it'll be a little busier. We've got a couple more applications with a little more detail. I think this was good, Eric, having a relatively light agenda for tonight. It allowed us to get the bugs out, so I appreciate you setting it up. And I guess we'll see you all, and we'll, I'll yield. Unless anybody has anything else for the group, I'll yield to Ryan for a-
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting at 6:42 PM virtually in Canada with New York.
Okay.
Backing.
Backing.
All right, everybody stay well.
Be good, everybody.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
Hey, Eric.
Yep.
I will update the resolutions as I normally do, and John, I will forward them to you and Eric tomorrow as I normally would do.
Okay.
Assuming that'll be okay for you guys.
Yeah.
John, did you get everything?
Send them to Chuck too. And then, since getting Chuck to sign stuff, we're probably going to create like something of a, just a folder essentially for him to sign at a later date. If Chuck can respond after the fact saying that it looks okay or whatever, then that will be fine for the time being.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing tonight was the EAF form, and I think technically he can sign that electronically. It's already fillable.
Do we have a version for him to do that?
I thought when, you know, what I can do is, probably not, you're right, because I scanned it in. Why don't I send that to you right now, the part two and part three as a fillable form? That way Chuck can sign off on it.
Okay.
I'll, what I'll do is I'll send it to you guys tomorrow when I send in the resolutions. Does that work?
Yeah.
Fine, yep, works good.
That will be separate. Okay.
John, how did, how did it go for you? Were you able to follow everything?
Hold on, he's muted real quick.
There you go. Okay, John?
Why is it not like?
Try again, John.
You got to unmute yourself. There you go.
How about now?
Good.
Okay, yeah, everything was good. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks for sitting in. All right, I'm leaving, guys.
All right.